Welcome to the 6:00 PM Special Redevelopment Agency Meeting. All board members are present and accounted for here. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance and Vice Chair White, if you'll lead us in that.
You bet. Please rise if you are able and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair White. At this point, we will observe a moment of silence. Do we have any acknowledgements from the board?
I'll just make a quick acknowledgement. Wonderful, wonderful Juneteenth celebration this past weekend. I was only there on Saturday, but I just, the whole weekend was all booked up over there and it was just an amazing turnout. And also just to acknowledge Mayor Nadolski and Mara and other administrative staff, as well as Councilmember Graff, for coming to the Lester Park meeting with community there last week. It was really great turnout, amazing, and then also just really good feedback about things that we want to do in the park to try to activate it and what would be helpful and really, really wonderful comments from the community members. So I appreciate the administration for helping to do that.
Thank you, Board Member Chaburka. Okay, we have approval of minutes for the regular meeting of May 14th, 2024, Board Member Hare.
Yes, Chair, I have reviewed those and found them to be accurate and make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion by Board Member Hare and second by Board Member Blair to approve the minutes of May 14th, 2024. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Okay, up next, we have a public hearing for the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget amendment for the year and adjustments, and we invite Controller Justin Sorenson up. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board Members. Perfect. Thank you, Brandon. All right, thank you for taking the opportunity to listen to me tonight. What's before you tonight is a proposed resolution to adjust the budget in our redevelopment agency. As we look at each year, we look to see if there's any adjustments that need to be made at year end and provide that budget amendment to you. And before you tonight is a couple of adjustments that we'd like to propose and some increases as well. There are three areas in the redevelopment agency that closed in calendar year 2022: South CBD Mall, the 12th Street area, and the South Wall area. Those three areas have some existing fund balance in each of them. The South CBD Mall area and the 12th Street area were both haircut districts, and we're proposing that we transfer what was left in those two funds, so $46,500 and around $100 in the 12th Street area, and move those to the CBD Mall area to increase the contingency there that would help with the junction debt in that area. For the South Wall area, we're proposing a use of fund balance and putting that into a contingency. At this point, we don't have a source for that. All existing agreements have been paid for, and this is excess that we have in that area. There is no requirements for admin or housing with that, so administration is still working on what we will use those for. And at the point that we have a purpose for those funds, we will come back to you as a board with a proposed budget on what to use those for, but for now, we're appropriating that $149,000 into contingency. And then the final two in the Ogden River RDA, and we'll talk in the city meeting, an additional budget transfer that's associated with this, but we'd like to transfer funds out of the general fund for the sale of the Piccadilly Building. That property is owned by the city, and so we're recognizing that revenue in the city, and then we would propose transferring those into the RDA area. That will then be used to purchase property from UDOT. This is part of the Parkway Group agreement that came before you back in November, the LTDA. So that's $250,000 increase into the Ogden River RDA. And then the last one is also another transfer in from BDO lease revenue. We propose, we have some existing fund balance that we're proposing that we transfer. This is from fiscal year, prior to fiscal year '24, of existing fund balance that we'd like to use to help with the Exchange Building. We know that there's a lot of concerns there for safety and just with the age of the building needing some improvements, so there is already some funds in the track line area that we had put in there for this. This is just adding to it, so an additional $560,000. So the total appropriation for you tonight for your consideration is $1,052,200 of an increase to our RDA budget. Any questions?
Any questions?
Just if you can, thank you, Chair. The money going to the Exchange Building, that will join a fund that is in what amount? And how does that match with what we project the stopgap repairs to arrest the erosion of that building?
So the estimated, if I recall from our CED director last week, the amount of the quote that we got back was closer to $1,500,000 or more to do the full restoration. We have, I believe it was $300,000 or $400,000 in the area right now, so this obviously wouldn't be enough, but it would get us an amount to start on what's being done, to get some of the critical things done.
So you used the words "full restoration" of the building?
Well, to keep the building from crumbling further, correct?
Viable, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Nadolski, you may comment on that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, not full restoration, but stabilization.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Wrong word. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Justin at this time? If not, this is a public hearing. Thank you, Justin. If you'd like to address the board on this item, please step to the podium and limit your comments to three minutes. If you're online, go ahead and raise your hand. We invite you to come up, state your name, and address on this particular item. Okay, not seeing any movement. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion to close this public hearing by Board Member Myers and a second by Board Member Chaburka. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Any other further discussion on this proposed resolution? Not a motion on this item.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt a proposed resolution 2024-3.
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Hare and a second by Board Member Myers to adopt the proposed resolution 2024-3. This is a roll call vote.
Board Member Blair?
Aye.
Board Member Chaburka?
Aye.
Board Member Graff?
Aye.
Board Member Hare?
Aye.
Board Member Myers?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye, and that passes. Okay, any comments from our Executive Director of the RDA?
None at this time.
Thank you. From board members? Okay, take a motion to adjourn the RDA meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion by Board Member Blair and a second by Board Member Hare to adjourn the RDA meeting. The voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Bear with us for a few seconds here while we reset up for our council meeting. We'll wait for our, yeah. Okay, welcome to the June 18th, 2024 City Council meeting. All council members are present. First up on the agenda, we have approval of minutes, and first up, we have the joint work session of May 14th, 2024. Councilmember Graff?
Chair, I have reviewed those minutes and find them to be accurate.
Thank you. And the May 21st, 2023 joint work session, Councilmember Blair?
Yes, thank you. I have reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate.
And last, we have the regular meeting of May 21st, 2024. Councilmember Myers?
I've reviewed those minutes and believe they are accurate, and I would make a motion to approve the minutes of these meetings.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Myers and a second by Councilmember Graff to approve these minutes. And just double checking the joint work session of May 21st, is that 2024?
Oh, good catch.
2024, okay. So on our agenda, we have it listed as 2023, but it's 2024. So with that motion to approve those minutes with the second, this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay, those passes. And that should correct the agenda there. Okay, first, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget amendment year and adjustments, and again, we'll invite Justin Sorenson up to address this on this item.
Thank you, Chair and Councilmembers, for allowing me to be here for you tonight to discuss some adjustments to the budget this year. I know we have some other items tonight regarding next year's budget, but this is some cleanup and some other items related to our budget in fiscal year '24 that we are currently in. To begin with, as was mentioned in the redevelopment agency meeting, we need to recognize, we would like to recognize the sale of the Piccadilly Building property and the amount of $250,000. We'd like to recognize that revenue and then also recognize a transfer out of the city to the RDA, which was done in the, and then that receipt into the RDA was done in a separate budget action. So we'd like to recognize that. Then there's also in our non-departmental, as we go through the, our budget year and we review our wages and our operational expenses, we go through and evaluate where we're going to finish for the year to see if there's any need for, to cover excess. If there is a need to cover any wages that are going to run over budget or if we have excess, and then we bring a budget opening to you on how to propose to use those funds. And so in this budget opening, there are a few of those items. The first one is we'd like to propose, we do put in our non-departmental each year $250,000 for payroll contingency. We'd like to propose using that, $150,000 of that would be used for our attorney's office to help cover compensation overages in their department this year. We had some excess expenditures for part-time there that pushed them over budget, and so we'd like to recognize, or we are in need of additional wage dollars in that department. We'd also like to propose a non-departmental moving, we have a line item for our comprehensive sustainability plan that has, we've been carrying forward. We have a contract set up now in the amount of $26,000. We have well above that to be able to use for that study, and so we'd like to propose using a portion of those funds that have been set aside for the CFSP, as it's called, to be able to start our, the workforce planning study that has been discussed in prior work sessions. So we'd like to shift $60,000 so that we can put out a request for proposal on that. In the police department, we would propose, again, they have some excess wages, we propose that, a couple of uses of those. The crime lab expense, their CSI expense that they have has overrun this year, and with the county, we're proposing to cover that overage. And then also, our animal shelter expense was more than what we've budgeted this year, and so we need to cover that overage. And then we also, what our B-bill leases are, is our fleet that we have as a city, it's purchased through our internal service fund, our fleet and facilities fund, and then they charge back a lease rate to individual departments and divisions to help cover the eventual replacement of those, as well as operating and maintenance of those vehicles. We try to adjust those budgets each year based on, as we replace vehicles, and in fiscal year '24, there was, we've replaced quite a few vehicles in the police department, which has pushed that line over budget, and again, we're proposing $113,000 to help cover that overage. We also have a couple of small items of revenue that we'd like to recognize in the police department. The first one is a small grant that was received in the amount of $1,000, and that was to use for, I apologize, I'm forgetting my notes. It was from the Weber Morgan Health Department to be used for some summary events in May and June. And then we also received funds from the Utah Domestic Violence Coalition to help with some transports that the city has helped to pay for. We'd like to recognize that revenue that we've received as we've had a corresponding expense, so that total $33,000 we'd recognize in their small tools and equipment. In the fire department, we also have excess wages there that we'd propose using those, as well as some small tools and equipment excess wages to then be moved over to our fleet fund to be able to help with funding a new piece of equipment, a new fire truck. Those are expensive and they have a long lead, a long lead time for, to order and before we get them, anywhere from 12 to 24 months. And so we'd like to propose with helping to fund that with some of these excess dollars that we have. In our CED department, this is the other one that we are proposing to use some of our non-departmental, non-departmental excess weight, or our contingency payroll dollars in the amount of $85,000 to help cover overages in that department. And then the last one is they had a, an accelerator conference. I don't know if any of you were able to attend, but we had some donations for that. The city, the CED department were the ones that ran the department, but they received some funding to help put that on, so we'd like to recognize that $4,000 they received to be able to put on that conference. And then in our public services department, we had, we're projecting out excess wages there as well, that we'd like to, a portion of that transferred to the CIP fund that we would put into our general facility improvement CIP. There's always a need there, and so we'd propose a portion of it there, and then the other $30,000 of that would be, we would propose go to our attorney's professional technical account to help with some professional expenses that are needed there. So the total adjustment to the general fund is an increase of $287,000. There we go. In our tourism fund, we're anticipating our, the amount of revenue that we'll be receiving to be higher than what we had budgeted for, so we're, this is a true-up to the, our budget and actuals, so we'd like to increase our amount of hotel tax revenue that we receive by $35,000, and the offset to that, we're putting into our CVB contract, which is with Visit Ogden. Whatever amount we don't end up, we have a contract with them to pay them 55% of what we receive, and so whatever we don't spend, that'll roll into that fund balance in a later year. We propose what we use those funds for, so that's increasing that fund by $35,000. In our CIP fund, we would propose, there's a couple of things that we'd like to do there. The first is to recognize the $300,000 transfer in from the general fund and putting that into our facilities improvements, our FL007, to be able to use there. We also program in a project contingency each year, and we've used this every year, and we're proposing in fiscal year '24 to transfer those to the golf fund to be able to use that at El Monte for their driving range, the fence there. It's, I don't know if anybody has seen that, but it's in dire need of replacement, and we're proposing to use those funds to help with that this year. We'd also like to appropriate the, a couple of ramp grants that were received this spring from the county. The first one was for $183,000, and it's related to our 20th Street, Washington and Quincy CIP, or sorry, that one's to our Mount Ogden and Mount, I was reading the wrong line, our Mount Ogden and Mount Airy playground equipment. And then we also have another ramp that we'd like to appropriate of $185,000 for Lester Park playground and equipment. We've already appropriated the match for both of these projects. This is recognizing the ramp awards that we've received. We've also, would like to move some funds around, propose moving some funds around in the CIP fund. Our 20th Street, Washington to Quincy CIP is completed, and we have excess funds there. The original source for that project, there were some WACOG and other sources, but then the city portion came from our EN006 street construction account. We had moved funds from there to this 20th Street. We'd like to propose moving those excess back to our general street construction CIP to be used there. And then we also increased our Class B and C revenues this year, and that increase we put into a contingency, depending on, we wanted to see how revenues did come in. We do anticipate that we will receive what we've budgeted for, and so we'd like to propose using that contingency. We've worked with engineering, and they'd like to add that to that street construction CIP as well. The last one in there is to recognize an amount received from the state, from UDOT, for $900,000 for a project related to the BDO shared-use trail. We'd like to recognize that into our Centennial Trail CIP. There is a match required with those funds of $600,000. We've already, we have other sources, we've got some utilities that they're going to be doing, that we're going to use that as part of the match, and then there's also a couple other CIP projects that we've already budgeted for that we've, we're going to use as the match for that $600,000, so there's no additional amount needed. We're just recognizing what UDOT is providing to us. So the total increase to our capital improvement fund is an increase of 1.5, just over 1.5 In our enterprise and internal service funds, the first one you'll see there is our airport fund. We would like to recognize, the last two years, we've received federal grants from the FAA for the terminal. We've, if you know, we've come in a prior action, we've appropriated funds for the terminal to be able to get it ready for Breeze Airways. These are funds that we've received from the FAA to do some additional improvements there, and so we'd like to recognize that. There are some existing funds still in that terminal CIP that will be the match for that. So that total increase is 20, $2,020,850. In the golf fund, we'd like to, one of them is to recognize the $100,000 from the CIP fund that we would then use for the fence there at El Monte. The other is we'd like to recognize our municipal grant that we received this year of $87,000. We'd like to use that for the deck there. They have some additional expenses there that weren't anticipated, and so we'd like to use a portion of it for that, and the other portion, we'd like to use for the, for kitchen improvements at the building there at El Monte, so that they, they need to replace the hood to get it up to code, and to be able to, they're anticipating to have an increased number of clientele coming in with the new deck, and so we'd like to put a little bit of money into the kitchen there. So a total increase to the golf fund of $180,325. BDO, this was talked about within the RDA meeting, but using retained earnings that we would then transfer to the RDA track line area for the Exchange Building. In the medical fund, we have excess wages there. This would go towards that fire truck that we would like to replace. This would give a total of just over $600,000 for that replacement. We also have some existing replacement dollars in the fleet fund, so to get us close to the $1 million that are going to be needed for this truck. And then in the fleet and facilities fund, again, recognizing that money coming in from fire and the medical fund of $675,000 to go towards that truck, fire truck replacement. We'd also like to recognize new revenue that the city will be receiving from the state, or it's a federal award for an EV program, so this would be to purchase a couple of EV vehicles for the city. And then the other is a true-up for our facility charges as we, our facilities maintenance, as they go out and perform different things, they'll charge back to departments and some of those, so we're recognizing that revenue that they've already received. This is just trueing up the budget. So the total increase to our fleet and facilities fund is just over $1 million. And then the last one, thank you for your patience, is in our miscellaneous grants funds. The first is to recognize that federal grant for the EV, so this is for equipment and vehicles, so $128,000 is for vehicles, and the rest of it would be to install equipment or charging stations. We've also received a couple of grants for the police department that would be used for K-9 equipment and additional AED equipment. And then the last one is a state grant received from, for Union Station to be able to continue to do their oral histories that they're, they've been working on in the amount of $3,000. So the increase to our miscellaneous grants funds of $157,025. The total appropriation before you is $5,819,050. And with that, I know there was also some discussion as far as possibly shifting instead of using existing wages but using fund balance, and so I have prepared, I don't have it with me, but I do, did prepare a new schedule that would go, that would be, that we would transmit to be able to go with that, that would shift it being from fund balance instead of wages if that's what council decides to do tonight.
Thank you, Justin. And yeah, just the communication between administration and council is that, you know, we'd like to use wages for wages, for future wages, and so this, just roughly over $1 million, we can, we can use that for next year's essentially, and then using fund balance our savings from, to pay for those equipment items, so. All right, any questions for Justin at this point? Okay, if not, we'll, this is a public hearing, so on this, on this item of the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget amendment year and adjustments, if you'd like to address the council on this item, please step to the podium and state your name and limit your comments to three minutes, and if you're online, go ahead and raise your hand.
Laura Lewis, I have a couple of questions. On the sale of the Piccadilly Building, was that property appraised? Is that a fair market value on that property, and were there multiple appraisals if an appraisal was done? Also, why were there part-time employees required in the attorney's office? Was there something unusual that happened this year that required those, that additional labor, or is this something that potentially could be ongoing? And there were also shortages in the police department, and I'd like to know what those were, what type of overages those were. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Adrian Subler, Ogden resident. Just, I'm not sure if I saw this right. I feel like I can't walk, I can't hear, and I can't see, but I thought that I saw something up there about an animal shelter that, and there was like $24,500, I think, put aside for that. I wanted to find out about that because if it's what I think it is, it seems like this is sort of redundant. It goes back to a subject that I know y'all are tired of hearing about, but we just knocked down a perfectly good structure that we had set up for animals, and even though it wasn't necessarily the Ogden citizens, I guess, that had the shelter, it was for the wildlife. But here, we're talking about putting more money into another facility for animals? I guess I sort of resent that because we're looking at, you know, we all saw what was going on with the, the park, the wildlife center, and with the...
Dinosaur Park.
And the dinosaur park. And it seemed like to me what we really saw was a lot of pettiness, and that's the reason that building was really taken down. It had nothing to do with logic. I think it was, you know, and here we go, and we're now saying we want to get some more, another structure up here for this. There's a lot of things that I guess I see as an outsider looking at, we keep tearing down buildings, and some of them are historical and decent, there's no reason for them to be torn down, just to put up new structures, and then later on, we turn, we tear those structures down and pay more money for a third structure in the same place, and it just seems like to me that that's silly. And I just, I resented as a taxpayer that I keep seeing this kind of situation come up, and as time goes on, that we continually do the same thing, and it may not be the same council, but Ogden City is the one, the citizens, like me, are the ones that are paying for the same thing over and over again. I'm on a fixed income, and I'm barely making it now with everything changing, so I'd like y'all to consider that with anything that you add tax-wise to the average citizen. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Teresa Bramwell. Like the last lady, I, this kind of went over my head a little bit, but a couple of things that I heard discussed. One was the Visit Ogden site, which I've seen on Facebook. It comes up literally every time I get on Facebook. It's one of the first things that comes up, and I've noticed that the main photo on that Visit Ogden website is a building in Huntsville. And so I clicked on it just to see what the website was offering and what was available in Ogden to visit, because I haven't visited Ogden, I've just lived here most of my life, and so I wondered what was in Ogden to visit, and what I found was that most of the things that were being advertised on that website were in Ogden Valley, not Ogden proper. There were some Airbnbs and the hotel that's right next to the park in Huntsville was the main thing on that website, and very few things, or things I had never heard of that said they were in Ogden, and I didn't even... And very few things, or things I had never heard of that, that said they were in Ogden, and I, I didn't even know what those were. The second thing, Laura's question about the Piccadilly Building. My understanding of the valuation of that for $250,000 is that the 250 was for the vacant lot. It did not include the building because Ogden City had demolished the building prior to it being sold to the developer. So the $250,000 was the value of the vacant lot. Well, then I would question that as, as a real estate professional, that valuation. And then the, the other thing I want to address is, is the, the animal, the money for the animal shelter. And I have some experience with this issue as well, being that I grew up with horses and animals of all kinds on my property in Ogden. And I know how those animals became no longer existing in Ogden. And the reason is because Ogden City was very aggressive about having those animals removed. They did not want them in Ogden. They wanted the land to be developed into, into four, fourplexes, which is what it was, what happened to it. You know, but the, the process of those animals no longer becoming ours and becoming somewhere else had a lot to do with this shelter and this money. So less aggressive tactics with animals would probably mean you need less money in that department. Thank you.
My name is Tanya Brandon. I've lived here in Ogden for 13 years. My daughter's grown and she's special needs and she's working as a crossing guard. And it concerns me the stories that I hear about what people do through the crossings while she's there and she sees people run.
Sorry to interrupt. This is a public hearing on the budget item. We have a, if this is related to the budget.
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. My apologies. So I, I guess I'm requesting that maybe they could put in cameras or also a raise because the crossing guards have not yet had a raise in years. And it should be keeping pace with inflation, which it hasn't. And so that's why I wanted to come to the budget meeting to see if you guys could find the funds to at least give them a raise. And if maybe put some cameras in, you know, some traffic cameras in those crossings to protect not only our crossing guards, but the children that they are trying to protect. That's it.
Thank you, Tanya. Yep. We have a hand online. Let's go ahead and go to Heath.
Hi, Heath Sutter, Ogden resident. I just wanted to, since the shelter is brought up in the budget here. I've heard rumors that the dinosaur park is a, is that plan for their own purposes.
Heath, I don't know if there's something on your end. We're having a really hard time hearing you.
Sorry, next time.
Say next time.
Next time?
I think you said next time.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Heath. Okay. Sorry, I couldn't quite hear what you're saying. Any other comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
Chair, I move that we close the public hearing on this item.
I'll second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Hire, a second by Councilmember Graff. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Okay. I took a few notes, a couple of questions. With regards to the animal shelter, I'll start there. The animal shelter, we have an arrangement with Weber County where they provide, they provide the service with the animal. So it's not building a new building. It's, it's an existing facility. Trying to remember how long we've had that arrangement, if it's been, Mayor, do you know?
For as long as 10.
Like 11 years? Okay.
Sorry, or more. That was why the wildlife rehab moved in. Because we were no longer using our animal shelter because we were contracting with the county at the time. So the increased cost is being passed to us from the county for services provided for animal services.
Right. And it, and it is a little concerning, the amount. We've all, the police chief expressed his concern about that. Something I think we would like to all, all probably find out a little bit more as to why those costs have escalated like they have. But that's, that's what it is. It's not necessarily to build a new building or anything along those lines there.
Can I make another follow up comment about that? Because I also heard when I rewatched all the meetings that you guys had while I was gone, was that we have sort of a discrepancy in probably how many animals that are actually living in Ogden City and the amount of licenses that we have. And those licenses, those license fees would help us to cover some of those costs. So if you have a pet, as I do, I have a couple of pets, and I know that my license has lapsed. It'd be really great if everybody could go and register your pet because also if your pet gets lost or loose, then that would be a great way to help track them back to their house.
Very good. Thank you. The question on the, the attorney, the, the extra wages, if there was a specific thing, I don't know if we want to, I, I know that Gary talked about that in his presentation. Janine, I'm looking at you.
I'm pretty sure it's for, at the prosecutor's office that they had to do some increase just because they're just been so understaffed. And also for some additional support staff for them. So she's correct, there will be ongoing costs as a result of some of these increases.
Okay. And then do we budget, we budgeted for some of those increases in the coming year? Yes.
Correct.
Yep. And then overages in the police department, I don't know, was there overages or, I don't think there were overages. I think we had excess wages in the police department. So it wasn't, wasn't overages in that we had to pay more out than what was budgeted. We actually had, we didn't pay out what we budgeted. Does that make sense? We had fewer, we had, we didn't, yeah. So it's a negative 300, $300,000 is what, so we budgeted in excess of what we actually paid out. And so that 300,000 is what that's referring to. The Piccadilly Building, the appraisal on that. Mayor, I don't know if you want to address that item. I think there was a, there was an appraisal done, but.
Correct. So that was done in, toward the end of 2023? And my recollection is there was an appraisal and that the cost was based on the appraisal and market value.
Yeah.
I didn't hear that. Could you repeat it?
The transaction was approved in end of 2023 and was based on an appraisal and market value.
Who did that appraisal?
Sorry for talking quietly. I don't know offhand who did the appraisal.
Yeah. I don't remember either. I know that we had a work session. We had, we had, we had those items presented to us. We could, we could look that up and get that information. Let's see. Visit Ogden is a, is a, is a Weber County organization. So they, they used to call themselves the Weber County or the Ogden Weber Visitor and Convention Bureau. And just for marketing purposes, Visit Ogden, shorter, more concise. But that's, so it's not, I don't think it's out of the ordinary to have Weber County items listed in, in the Visit Ogden website. And the, the extra money, the 35,000 was excess more than what we budgeted that we would receive. So we received 35,000 more than what we expected to receive from that source. So. And then the crossing guards, I think we have, we did talk about, that's one of the items in, in the budget for the coming year, not necessarily related to this. This is year end adjustments. But for, for the coming year budget, there is going to be discussion on that.
And if I may, Chair, I'll acknowledge Tanya Brandon for coming this evening. Her daughter is assigned second and Harrison, and I actually went out and visited because they were very concerned about safety. And I will tell you, watching her walk out into traffic and then automobiles turning across at this, with the flag out, making a turn through the intersection is a frightening thing. As I left and continued south on Harrison, I watched it happen again as a crossing guard was in the street at Ben Lomond High School and then beyond Ben Lomond, it happened again. And I paused and stopped and talked to that crossing guard. And she said, oh yeah, it happens all the time. We feel very vulnerable out here. In fact, a couple of them had told me that they'll stand in the traffic lane to keep people from turning to protect the students that are crossing. And that's, that's a tough situation for those people to be in. And I'd, I'd like to support the police department in really giving this a good look around safety and training and what they should do and what they shouldn't do with cars and traffic lanes. And what we got to do to deter people from breaking the law. With their automobile and stop traffic.
Yep. Thank you. Mayor, you had a comment as well?
Just wanted to add our support to the crossing guards. The stories you just shared emphasize the need for them and the, and the importance of the role that they play. Can you imagine if those dynamics were at play without a crossing guard helping the kids? It would be really scary. I think about the crossing guard at Gramercy Elementary in Mount Fort on 12th Street is really, really busy. I go through the one on Harrison and Mount, Mount Ogden every day on the way to the gym and it's all, I see people speed through it all the time. And I also see our officers there on a regular rotation. And I know that they hit all of the school zones as much as they can. But it seems that every time they go there, they catch people speeding through the school zones and then, you know, they're doing everything they can to stop it. But also just wanted to relay that the police department is very deliberate in reaching out to other, usually it's a school district, I believe, that would employ the crossing guards. For us, it's, for us, it's the city. But to make sure that our pay is competitive for the crossing guards, but also we make sure to pay two full hours for every shift that they provide, which is a little more than is typically needed, we hope, to help buffer the expenses and make the, make the effort of showing up and protecting the kids worthwhile for them too.
All right. Thank you for sharing that. Any other discussion items on this, on the budget amendment fiscal year end adjustments? If not, we have a discussion about an amendment to the motion or a motion to amend the ordinance. Anyone wants to go ahead with that?
Sure. And I think Chair Ritchie said this earlier, and, and part of the reason of this, this amendment is to actually move the, or keep the wage excess in, as part of the wages and, and use fund balance. So I move to amend ordinance 2024-20 Schedule B to change the proposed source of funds for the general fund transfer of 195,000 in police, $300,000 in fire, and $330,000 in public services from wages and to use, and use, to use of fund balance. And to change the proposed source of funds for the medical fund transfer of $275,000 from wages to use of retained earnings. That is a mouthful.
I'll say I'll second.
Are you? Okay. We have a motion by Vice Chair White and a second by Councilmember Hire to amend the proposed ordinance as, as stated. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then a motion to adopt the amended ordinance.
Chair, since Councilmember White did the hard part, I'll just do the easy part. I would move that we adopt, or that we adopt ordinance 2024-20 as amended. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance 2024-20 as amended by Councilmember Hire and a second by Councilmember Myers. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye. Thank you. That passes.
Chair, if I could just make a quick comment.
Yes.
I appreciate all the work that went into this. This is something that we, we haven't done in the past. And I appreciate administration and, and everybody really trying to work at, trying to figure this out and be, think outside the box and think new and futuristic of our city. So thank you. I appreciate that. I'm sure the rest of the council does too.
Yeah, well said. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Up next, we have a public hearing on the enterprise fund transfers. And Janine Eller Smith, our executive director of the council office, will present on this item.
Thank you, Chair Ritchie. Yes, I am here to talk about the enterprise utility fund transfers. The policy decision to transfer funds from the utilities was actually made decades ago and has occurred every year since that budgetary decision was made. I know it's been at least 30 years. It could have been longer. Transferring funds to cover general city operational costs has been a common practice for cities that operate their own utilities. So Ogden isn't unique in this. But these transfers did go largely unnoticed by residents. And in 2016, the state legislature passed a statute requiring that these types of transfers, when they occur, that residents be given specific notice and an opportunity to comment on those transfers. In talking with staff at the Utah League in Cities and Towns, they indicated that the purpose of that law was really to increase transparency and discourage the use of excess utility funds as balancing mechanisms and just basically encourage better budgeting practices. Enterprise funds are meant to operate independently and to generate enough revenue to cover all operational costs. And the city has enterprise funds for water, sanitary sewer, storm, and refuse. So the transfer is intended to, or the money that is transferred is intended to serve as payment for franchise and property taxes that the utility would pay if it were privately operated. So they've assigned 6% for franchise tax and 6% for property tax. And it's just treated as a cost of doing business, just like any other utility that pays those, those costs. So other privately operated utilities are be, like Rocky Mountain Power, Dominion Energy, cable companies, they all pay those fees. The transfer amounts that are proposed in the FY '25 budget are 3.2 million from the water utility, 1.8 from sanitary sewer, 768,000 from storm sewer, and 912,000 from refuse. The 12% is calculated on total revenues from user fees. So water sales, hookup fees, installation and repair, hydrant repair, rentals. And the state, but the state law requires disclosure of the transfers as a percentage of total expenses. And so that's why those percentages don't show as 12% is because they're calculated on different numbers. So in the spirit of full transparency, there is an additional 5% transferred from the utilities to the general fund to cover administrative services provided to the utilities. So payroll, human services, resources, risk management, legal, all of those services that are provided to all the departments in the city also provide those same same services to the utilities. And so that 5% is to cover those. Like I mentioned, this isn't unique to Ogden. These, these kinds of transfers, other cities with utilities do these transfers. Provo operates a power utility. Their transfer actually is more, makes up more than 23% of their total general fund budget. So a big chunk of money. I think it's like over $16 million. Banifil's Power Utility Transfer is 12% of their general fund. Ogden, this total 17%, the six plus six plus five, actually is 11% of our general fund balance. So we at least, we rely on those funds less than other cities and just treat it as a cost of doing business to the utilities. Based on some discussions and comments that we heard from the public, last year we decided that it would be important to have a study done and we contacted, contracted with LRB. to have a study done. And we contacted, contracted with LRB, our financial consultants. And because we have always given this explanation for why we use the 6% and the 6%, and that the fact that if we didn't do this, property taxes would have to be increased. So that explanation has always been consistent, but we've never able to, been able to put exact numbers to those explanations and, and the impacts of what the transfers are. And so we did have this study done. So that we hope to do a second. So what we ask them is to determine whether that 5%, 5% administrative fees reasonable, and then determine impact on utility rates if transfers did not occur, and then determine impact on general fund if transfers did not occur. And we have a second phase that they're going to be working on to determine whether that 12% is actually equivalent to property and franchise taxes. And that, we'll have that ready for next year's budget, I suppose. So the result of that study showed that in order to replace the lost revenue from the utility transfers, it would take a minimum of a 33% tax increase, and that's based on 2023 data, to generate the additional revenue. And we know that it's going to be at least more than 35% if you did it for FY25. Savings on the utility rates for ratepayers would actually be less than the increase to their property taxes. And that's because there are fewer property taxpayers than there are utility ratepayers. So we actually be, instead of expanding that tax base, like is always the goal, we would actually be reducing that tax base. The reason is that Ogden has a significant number of entities that are exempt from property taxes. All those entities use water and storm and sewer systems. Not all of them use refuse because the bigger ones can often contract for those services. But they also use police and fire services. They use our roads. They use sidewalks. And the fact is, should those nonprofits be paying for the services that, those services that the city's providing? And I've listed some of the larger tax exempt entities that here, here in Ogden, Weber State, Intermountain, the US government, Weber County, Ogden School District, churches, and then, of course, all the small nonprofits that have buildings. None of, all of those are tax exempt. Based on the numbers provided by LRB, 13.5% of all property tax, property values are tax exempt. And I will say that I know that number is lower than it really actually is. This is the numbers that they could confirm based on information from Weber County. But I have reviewed that raw data, and a lot of tax exempt property have zero values because they just don't value them because they're tax exempt. So it'd just be extra work. So I think that actually it's probably more between 50 and 20% tax exempt. But this is based on the information that LRB was able to confirm. So that's the information about the, the transfers. Right now, tonight, there's no action required. This is just an opportunity for residents to comment on this issue. So the action related to the transfers will actually will occur with the adoption of the tentative budget tonight and the, and the final, final budget in August. So this is, this QR code will, provides a link to that study that LRB provided, if anybody's interested in, in reading that. It's just a short three or four page review of the data, pretty basic information. So any questions?
Questions for Janine?
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciated that report that was conducted and being able to look at the data and understand it a lot better because I know I misunderstood it many times, even though I thought I understood it. So, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chair Ritchie?
Yes.
I would just like to comment that this has been something that the council has reviewed in some of their work sessions. And so this is the first time it's being presented publicly. And although you can come to work sessions and hear the reports that we've studied over some period of time. So there's been a lot of work done on this and a lot of justification for why this happens. And just to the constituents and consumers here in Ogden, our residents, this is, this is a good way for us to, to have some responsibility take place with some of the larger entities who use city utilities and, and these enterprise funds. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. And so we ask that those who step to the pulpit, please to state, state your name, be respectful with your comments, and limit your comments to three minutes. And it's not intended to be a question and answer period, per se, but we'll be taking questions down and hopefully answer those at the end of the, the public hearing portion. Doesn't look like we have any online, but go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Laura Lewis. Well, my opinion on this is you're charging us an overage, average 10% across the board on these. And I know we keep hearing, well, we're going to have to raise your taxes if we transfer these. But to, I agree with that comment where whoever made that, that study, that it doesn't give us a fair representation of how you're actually budgeting our money. When you take this and put it somewhere over there, somewhere in your general fund, I think that should, whatever you're putting this in should be in the fund. That's the transparency of this. And if these funds had been put into, left here, maybe we wouldn't have to be, being charged an additional 4% on our water bill to pay for the pipeline. I don't know if this is, money can be used for capital improvements, but maybe it's something to consider in the future about that. But it just doesn't seem right to take this overcharge on utilities and then, oh, and that's another thing. I don't understand, this isn't, government's a nonprofit organization. I, I don't have the impression that you are trying to make money on the public. So are these, these administrative costs included in this money that you are already planning on transferring? Or is this an additional fee that you charge separately? And I don't think it's fair to compare us to privately owned companies because they are for profit. And so they run totally different than I think a government should run. But I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll pull up here. Adrian Zubler, Ogden citizen. And again, this is basic. I know y'all have worked really hard on putting all these things, these ideas in the budget together. You understand it a lot better than I do. I've just got a couple of basic things that I'm trying to survive, is that we need to keep in mind, excuse me, keep in mind that if we have like social security, that is like three, it's going to go up 3%. But at the same time, our health budget is going to be 7%. So we're already behind on 4% as a, as a retired person. And I just think that y'all need to keep in mind there, maybe instead of having, you know, some of these nonprofits and some of these other entities that are getting some benefits there, maybe you should think about people that are 55 and older or on fixed incomes, that you do something special for them, to hold them, you know, at, at a certain level so that, you know, we're not constantly being taxed. Because I keep hearing tax, tax, tax. And I'm thinking, how much more can we take it? And as, like I said, as average citizens, and a lot of us that are older don't have the option of being able to go back to work and, and keep up with inflation. Some of us do, and maybe we get to find some other ways for us older folks to make some extra money. But just please keep that in mind when y'all are, are talking about taxes. Thank you.
Teresa Bramwell. I just wanted to tell you guys that I really appreciate you. I know I get up here and I'm critical sometimes, but, you know, this isn't an easy job. And I, I think you have to listen ad nauseam to a lot of these very specific monies and issues and where they go and how they get spent. And, and that isn't an easy job. And so I understand the scope of that, and I appreciate that you're, you're doing your best. But the one thing that stood out to me that she mentioned here, and I think it's kind of an issue of you can't see the forest for the trees, is that 20% of the real estate in Ogden is not paying taxes. And what that means is those are either schools, or their government buildings, or their 501(c)(3)'s, or their churches that are tax exempt. And what I've noticed in my lifetime is that I don't believe that 20% of the real estate in Ogden City, when I was born, was tax exempt. So that has become a much larger number over the course of my lifetime. And what that means is that there's less businesses and there's less taxpayers, because those people are being eliminated for then the 501(c)(3)'s or tax exempt organization to come over and, and, and take over those lands. And then the burden of taxes becomes greater because there's fewer taxpayers. And I don't know if this is a group that can address that, if, if that issue needs to go to the state or to the federal government, or if it is something that can be addressed on the local level. But I think 20% is just way too high. And I think Ogden needs to be concentrating on drawing businesses and, and taxpayers back into the city and welcoming them with open arms. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, I'm Joseph Baumann, Ogden resident. I was here last week and gave history lessons, but this week is going to be about money on the pipeline. That, what I did some research on is that the enterprise fund, the rules and the regulations and codes state in there that you can use the financing in that enterprise fund to pay for revenue bonds. So what I'm suggesting and advocating is, is that the 3.2 million and change that's going to be transferred out of that fund into the general fund be earmarked for payment on the revenue bond and have it paid to the principal and still do the raise of the utility rates like you have to do. The 7.18% was thrown out, and I wanted it converted into gallons of water so we could understand how much more you're going to be paying, which would be beneficial to the ratepayers. But if you did that, over the lifetime of that bond, you're going to retire that bond way earlier, and you're going to save the ratepayers a tremendous amount of interest, especially in lieu of the fact this could have been done when more likely this project could have been done for, in the neighborhood of 40 to 50 million dollars versus 82 million or 100 million, whatever is thrown out there. And then the other thing that I had, a question when the, the slide was presented up there is I don't understand how Dominion Energy or Rocky Mountain Power, the property taxes that they pay, has anything to do with Ogden City Utilities. That they're a private industry. They charge the rate users on their billing every month with monies to build new towers and bury new gas lines and stuff. Ogden City does the same thing. They charge their ratepayers money to substantiate and quantify the amount of water that they get and the utilities that they need through the water, sewer, and garbage. And it's self sustaining. And then the excess revenue that's charged by the, the increase in rates goes into the general fund for the city to use as they see fit. I've been opposed with this enterprise fund from the get going. It's, you're right, it's been around for over 30 years, and I've always complained about it. I just, I don't understand that. And the reason why I don't understand it, because it prevents all of you from raising the taxes, property taxes. Because you get more complaints out of property taxes than doing the utility enterprise rate transfer. My time's up. Thank you.
Thanks, Joseph.
My name is Stuart Kaler, Ogden resident. Thank you for your continued attention to this critical issue. I'm here to address the ongoing enterprise fund transfer now proposed in an alarming 6.68 million alongside the city's broader financial strategies that impact Ogden residents. While the city proposes a 2024 utility fund transfer analysis as a veneer of accountability, let's be clear, shifting costs from property taxes to utility bills is not transparency. It's a shell game that erodes public trust. And this approach avoids immediate tax increases but perpetuates a pattern of financial opacity. Meanwhile, we're looking at a hefty $100 million bond to fix our aging 36-inch pipeline. That's a massive bill. Yet it begs the question, why have the enterprise fund surpluses, which could have been used to fund critical infrastructure upgrades and replacements, been funneled, funneled into the general fund without accountability? These transfers are far more than fiscal decisions. They are betrayal of public trust and using utility fees to pad the general fund while planning to saddle residents with future tax increases and bonds is a reckless and shortsighted action. So I urge you to stop these transfers now, to use a surplus in the enterprise fund for what it's meant for, fixing our infrastructure. And let's invest in our city's future instead of hiding behind accounting tricks. Let's not dodge the tough choices either. If we want to keep our finances in check, we need to either cut spending or propose a straightforward tax increase. But let's face it, a tax hike won't fly with, with citizens. It'll get shot down pretty fast. As leaders of Ogden, it's your responsibility to be open and honest about how we spend our money. And residents deserve to know where every dollar goes. Thank you for listening. Ogden's future depends on leadership that's bold and honest.
Thanks, Stuart.
Hello, my name is Blaine Ritchie. I live on Country Hills Drive, 1480 Country Hills Drive. It's on the corner of Country Hills and Taylor. I have a petition that's been signed by 61 residents that live along this section. I want to read, and then I'll give you some background history on, on what's going on here.
Blaine, is, I'm sorry, is this related to the enterprise?
No.
Enterprise fund transfer? Okay. So that's what, this is section of the meeting is the?
Oh, I thought you switched over.
Public hearing on this one. So we're, yeah, we're, a public, public comment on that item will be a little bit later in the agenda. So sorry.
All right.
Yeah.
Didn't want to miss my chance.
Yeah, you get your chance. Okay. Any other, any other public comment on this item?
Jace Ryanville, Ogden City resident. You know, this enterprise transfer will happen. You know, it, it is what it is. But I, I thought it might be appropriate to share a story that I've shared with you, Ken. You know, there's a lot of infrastructure that's aging in the utility, you know, world here in Ogden. And I wanted to give an example. I own property on Jefferson and 24th area. There's a little side street called Orchard. It's a terrible street. It doesn't have parking. It doesn't have sidewalks, insufficient streetlights. And, and I've worked to purchase this property and, and make a difference. They don't even have enough water supply to provide water to the unbuilt land that's there. You know, in talking to the water company, they've got a long list and, and they don't even know when they can provide that water. And instead of maybe working interdepartmental to get more funds to do these kinds of things, to actually allow land in Ogden to be developed that's generating zero property tax for you guys, you know, there, there's guys, you know, they're saying it's five years down the road, we don't know. And then they try to saddle a developer like me with the cost of that, you know, which is a six-figure cost to run a new water line. And so, you know, there's a lot of passing of the buck and I just think you guys should be aware that, I don't know if they're rubbing nickels together over there, but these kinds of funds being removed from, from the enterprise fund are limiting their ability to do small projects on the grand scheme of things. We're talking about 100 grand to be able to provide appropriate water service to, you know, a foregone street that could generate property tax in the future. So I just wanted to bring that anecdote to the table that there's, there's high impact, small projects that are going unfunded and perhaps this kind of money could contribute to that. So, thanks.
Okay, not seeing any other movement. Entertained a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close the public hearing by Councilmember Hires, by Councilmember Graff. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. Any other discussion? Janine, I see Janine coming, or any other, okay, sorry. Yeah, I don't know if there's any other discussion. Are there any other council members who'd like to make a comment? I think this is an item that is definitely, I don't know if polarizing is the word, maybe polarizing is the word in terms of the feeling on that. I think I would just ask the question, if, if these transfers didn't occur, do we fundamentally believe that some of these tax exempt organizations ought to contribute to Ogden City's budget in any way? And if so, what would the mechanism be? And if there's no other mechanism for them to contribute to paying for roads and sidewalks and police and fire, how are they, how are they contributing to the city? And so that's, that's something that I think is worth considering as, as we think about this process. Somebody asked a question about Rocky Mountain Power taxes. See, Rocky Mountain Power, are they, and not, and so essentially, the, the idea of the transfers sort of mimics what the, what those private organizations do. They're, they're charging those fees. And so this is a way to, for the, the city enterprise funds to sort of capture that kind of a similar thing. And so, I, you know, I would say it's safe to say that the council, we don't, this council hasn't always been in a position of, well, that's just how we've always done it. Let's, you know, let's just keep doing that. I think we've had a lot of really thoughtful discussions about changes and things and ways that we can improve how we run our budget and be, be transparent and all of that and be, be efficient. And so I appreciate the presentation that Janine gave. I don't know if I could say it any clearer about how, why, the reasonings why we're doing what we're doing. And so I just, I think it's maybe just a fundamental question of how do you, how do you feel like we should, we should be doing that? I do believe that this practice does save taxpayers money, you know, even though some people may disagree with that. I think the, the studies have shown that if we didn't do this practice, we would be paying more as residents. And that's, that's kind of how I feel about that. Any other comments?
Chair, I was just going to say, I appreciate that we have a methodology and that we just keep it the same all the time, whereas we've heard, right, that other municipalities just kind of use it randomly, different percentages to balance their budget, which is not something that we have a practice. So I appreciate that we have a methodology that we follow for it. I also, and I'm not an expert in this space whatsoever, but you know, those other utilities we're talking about, they actually do go through the whole Public Services Commission to actually set their rates. So they're not just necessarily based on making money particularly. They do have that ability to do it, but they also have to go through a process to get their rates certified or agreed upon because they're a monopoly. And that's, you know, just part of that issue too. So I think it's a little bit different in that case as well. And I do appreciate that, at least in this case, it helps to spread the contributions across all the different entities in the community versus only targeting the people that pay property taxes.
Chair, if I could just kind of jump in on that too. I try to look at it, whenever we do these budget marathon deals like we, like we've been doing for the last several weeks, I try to look at this from a taxpayer perspective because we all are. And this, you know, I've been a council member for a while now and, and we've had this discussion every year. It happens all the time. And the first time we had it, it was so confusing. It was, it was migraine headache confusing, as, as you all are experiencing. Janine has polished her presentation every year to try to make it less confusing, but it's a confusing topic. But as a taxpayer, I am, and this has been going on for a long time. So if you look at it from the other perspective, because this transfer has been happening so long, it has kept our taxes lower. Okay, does that, I know you don't probably see it that way, but it actually has been. Your, your personal taxes because of the IRS and the courts and all the other entities, the churches, the nonprofits, they are all taking a chunk of this and they're paying for their share of some of these services in their water bill because they don't pay any other taxes. So they're getting it in their water bill instead of just getting away with it. That's why your taxes are a little bit lower. It's just the method by which it comes through. And I, Janine still said it better than me, but, but after my years of, of studying this topic as a taxpayer, I am, I am lots more comfortable doing it this way than raising property taxes for those who pay property taxes only and lower on the water rate. It just, the money's got to come from somewhere to do everything. This money isn't going into some big old black hole that somebody is benefiting weirdly from. It's, you know, the money that we take in goes to benefit the citizens in one way or another. There's a, there is a quote that I kind of wanted to share that I, that I pulled dear. It says, "Government is the great fiction through which everybody endeavors to live at the expense of everybody else." And that isn't what we're trying to do. We're trying to make sure that everybody gets their, you know, pays their way and takes their share. And that's what this is an endeavor to do.
All right. Vice Chair, wait.
I just have a quick comment and it's, it's for Teresa. And I know that it doesn't exactly address this, but you said, can we zone for this? And I'm not sure that we can zone for this, but I would hope that you would participate in the Plan Ogden zoning process that's going on right now. So plan-ogden.com if you want to be part of that, so.
Thank you. Mayor, or?
Chair, yeah, thanks. And Teresa and everybody in the room and online, next Wednesday night at Union Station, there is a public meeting around Zone Ogden. So your voices are valued and, and heard at these with their input. In our work sessions around all this, and you all were in them as well, and correct me if I'm wrong, I take comfort in our understanding that while our water rates and our utility rates aren't the lowest, nor are they the highest in the state. I think we're below 50, on the, below the 50% mark. So we're more expensive than the, or less expensive than the average utility payer. So we're not, the city isn't taking advantage of those of us using water, and that includes me, to pad their general budget. Instead, we're drawing money off as if the utility were a private business that would otherwise pay property tax, a franchise tax, and within its building housed human resources, IT services, and management administration. Those are the costs that we're pulling off, not some inflated number for utilities that we use to fill our general fund. And it is, I do believe, transparent, Ms. Lewis, in that the money is transferred to our general fund and then those monies are allocated to fill various line items within our budget and that's available in the mayor's budget book online.
Mayor, did I also hear a comment?
Thank you. Appreciate the comments that have been made by the council members and, and for the thoughtfulness on the input from the public. On, Adrian, you had a question about what can we do to help the 55+. I was going to defer to the item 3D sub triple I 1B. That was a lot. Water rate and discount fee amendments. Brandy Johnson's going to knock your socks off. She'll give you more information on what we're proposing to help with those that are struggling to pay their utility bills. On the utility fund transfer versus taxes, I'm with Councilmember Hires. I do think it takes bold leadership to, to stand for savings on behalf of the people. And we've bent over backwards to be as transparent as we can and we'll continue to do more to bring more transparency and more daylight to the, to the rationale behind it. I do, however, respect if there's a difference in philosophy and rooted around that rationale. I think that's absolutely okay. But appreciate the open mind that you guys have given to the analysis that we've asked for from a third party. For, for me and for my conscience, I've always felt good about it because it is rooted in a rationale and a methodology like Councilmember Richard Burka said, and that it's not rooted in an arbitrary number for, for nothing. So at the end of the day, it does save taxpayers money. I would venture to say in my eight, going on nine years now, budget, we take more critique for the utility transfer than we do for tax rate increases. So hopefully that counts to some degree for some, for bold leadership to take it in the chin, even though, take it in the chin on behalf of the residents to make sure that we're saving money. That's how I feel. But also just wanted to point out, getting to Chair Ritchie's comments about, is it fair for nonprofit organizations to operate in the city without paying into the, the cost of those services? And I would say that if you drive around our downtown, including through the East, or the East Central Neighborhood, there are more denominations and churches in those blocks than anywhere I've ever been. That is some of our most tax potential properties, you might say. It's, it's proximal to the downtown. It's, and those are big properties that are not paying in the taxes. And I think that those are also things that make a city a community. And I would hate for any city to look at the potential of having a university or employer like IRS or to have the diversity in denominations, et cetera, seen as a bad thing because they're not paying into the system. I think that those are good things that make for a well-rounded community. So I'm glad that we have a way for them to pay into the, into the services that we provide. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have the public hearing on the Fiscal Year 2025-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. And here to present on that is Glenn Simms, the Deputy Director of the Council Office.
Okay, thank you, Chair, Council. So as you mentioned, this item is the Capital Improvement Plan. So this is a five-year plan that we're presenting. Just a little bit of background on the plan itself, you do have a statement in your budget goals related to the Capital Improvement Plan, and that is to just ensure that adequate resources are available to make sure that we can address the needs of our city. So for those less familiar with capital improvement projects themselves, this is a definition of what they are. So any project that exceeds $50,000 that adds to the city's physical plant. So this is both design and construction. And it includes all of the fixed infrastructure that we have, like the buildings, streets, utility lines, parks, et cetera. The, a project can also be used for the reconstruction or rehabilitation of a, of a piece of our physical plant. So a CIP project is also something that would result in the long-term lease or acquisition of, of land and projects that require debt financing or borrowing. And then the last point there, anything that can be paid for in whole or in part by the imposition of impact fees. Now, that's based on our, our code definition of that. We don't actually charge impact fees in such a way, but that's something that could be done. So as far as funding and how we pay for capital projects, we have lots of different sources of funding for those. So it's not all general plan funds or general fund funds, but it's a pretty wide array. So we do have BDO lease revenue. That's one of our, our primary sources for capital improvement funding. We have a lot of federal and state grants, BNC road funds and active transportation funds. These are our gas taxes and our quarter cent sales tax funds. The enterprise funds, which you heard with the last item, those funds do pay for a lot of their own infrastructure, the water and sewer, storm sewer in particular. We also can pay for projects through bonds, which we're doing, for example, I guess not bonds, but other bond funding, which we have used for, for water and sewer infrastructure, and then ramp grants and other kinds of funding like that. So as you can see, we are trying to review the CIP and the budget together. This is a change that's recent, within the last few years. In years past, these were, were reviewed at two different times. And in doing so, we found that there wasn't a lot of alignment with that first year of the five-year plan and the actual budget that gets presented. So we wanted to put those a little bit closer together to allow a bit better alignment with that first year and with what's actually proposed in the budget. But since it is still a five-year plan, it is still a long-term planning document. So projects that are included in the, in the CIP may show funding for the first fiscal year or the second or third. We do try to keep track of those so you can see how those things change, as, as I mentioned, as a long-term planning document. So over the last few weeks, particularly in May, you heard the projects that were proposed by each department with their budget presentations. And so we do have department directors talk about the CIP projects with their budget as we go through. And then as, as anticipated, we do schedule the CIP to be adopted with the annual budget. So as far as the schedule goes, as I mentioned, there were a couple of work sessions in May where the directors talked about their proposed projects. On June 4th, we did have a bit of a question and answer in the work session about some of the projects. And the council set the public hearing for tonight. And so tonight, after the public hearing, you would have the opportunity to adopt the plan. And as far as the rankings, this is again, something that we've played around with a little bit, done it at different times. This last year in fall of 2023, we took what was adopted with the FY23 plan and, and presented to the council their, their preferences and their, their rankings for projects moving forward. So we would anticipate doing the same thing in, in the fall of this year, taking what was adopted here and getting your priorities for the next five-year plan next year. So if we get into the details of the plan itself, the Planning Commission does have a role in reviewing the, the CIP. And their role really is to make sure that the plan is consistent with the city's general plan. They had an opportunity to look at that in the first part of April. They found that everything was in compliance with the exception of these two projects. So Project EN017 calls for a traffic signal at that particular intersection, 1100 North and Monroe. And for those who have been around for a while, the Mount Lewis Plan that was, that was written in 2010, adopted in 2011, called for a roundabout at that intersection. So there was a bit of a discrepancy there. So they recommended that be fixed. If a traffic signal is the preferred infrastructure at that intersection, then that community plan would need to be updated to reflect that. And the second is the Community Fieldhouse. And the reason they, they found that that was not compliant was there was no location in the brief to make sure it was consistent with it, with the general plan or a community plan. So once a location is decided, if, if that project were to move forward, those plans would need to be updated as well to make sure they're consistent. So getting into some of the numbers, I thought over there, you all are going to be going to sleep with visions of PowerPoints in your head with numbers all over the place. But here are some numbers related to the CIP. So 74 new project, or 74 total projects, 15 of which are new, and the total proposed amount for funding for all projects over five years and all the funds is just under $262.8 million. And one of the things that we've done more recently is And one of the things that we've done more recently is broken those projects into ongoing or perpetual projects, and then one-time projects to give you all a better idea of what's in the plan. So you can see, a majority of the projects themselves are ongoing, but the majority of the funding is actually for one-time projects, and then just a handful there for ramp. So when we break down projects, these are just the proposed totals for projects. I've broken down here what's proposed for the first year in the plan itself, so these are not the actual FY25 budget numbers, but I will touch on those in a minute. Proposed for funding is about $15 million in the general fund for projects, 67 for the next four years, and $82 million total. And then just the same thing with the enterprise funds, $102 million proposed for the first year and $180.4 million proposed for all projects with the enterprise funds, and $117 million for the first year, and then, again, that $262.7 million altogether. So if we look at that first year of the CIP and the proposed budget, which was our intent of putting these together at the same time, you see that $117 million number in the first year of the CIP plan and just $25 million in the budget. Now, that looks like a huge discrepancy. It's about $92 million, but almost all of that is taken up by these two projects here. So the 36-inch canyon water line is about just over $86 million, and then the TSA Holding Room expansion is about $5 million. So you add those two together, it makes almost entirely that $92 million difference. And the reason these two projects are not included in that $25 million number is that the funding is different on these. So these are, the canyon water line is loans that the city will be securing, and that money will be recognized when we receive it, so it's not in the budget until we receive it, so there's a big difference. And then the Holding Room, that is some grant money as well as some existing money. So that project can still go forward, but that money is not recognized in the FY25 budget because of those other mechanisms. So this is obviously not anything that I'm intending anybody to read, but it's just an example of what it is. This is a summary that is in the packet material. It just tries to list as concisely as possible the projects, the dollar amounts, the administrative ranking, strategic plan directives, total costs, what's in the first year of the plan, what's in the budget, and what's planned for the future. So if you really want to get into the details, you can call that up with the packet materials and see that. So tonight is the public hearing for that. After you hold the public hearing, you have the choice to adopt it. And then, as I mentioned, in the fall, we will revisit that to go through some of the rankings. Any questions for me?
Can you describe where to get the packet?
Yeah, so if you get to the electronic agenda, so you just go to the minutes and agenda page from the city's main website, go to the city council, pull up the agenda for tonight, there'll be a hyperlink, the agenda item will show up as blue, and just click on that, and it'll bring up the packet material, and all that information will be in there.
Thank you.
Chair, I do have a
Yeah.
Question slash concern, maybe it's not a concern, it doesn't rise clear to that level, but we put in a traffic signal on North Street and Monroe, and it also, on the Mount Lewis Community Plan, was supposed to be a roundabout.
Yeah.
So, and I don't recall we did any special change to the community plan.
Right. Yeah, that's something that should be fixed as well. Those should be consistent.
Yeah, I, you know, I know that Justin was knee-deep into that traffic signal there, and I didn't know if maybe we could have him address it at all, or to see if that does indeed need to go through a process, or whether the same process that gave us North Street and Monroe was adequate.
Yeah, if Justin's available, I'm happy to turn the time over to him if he's willing to talk about that 1100 Norths project, the roundabout versus the traffic signal.
Seems willing.
Okay, we'll invite Justin up.
Yeah, so a few years ago, we received some funding from WACOG to do improvements on North Street between Washington and Monroe Boulevard, and you're exactly right. At that time, in the plan, there, it did show a roundabout at that intersection, and as we got in there and started evaluating the roundabout, which creates, roundabouts, you need room to have them function properly, and especially at Monroe Boulevard where that is a collector road, and in the future, when it connects up into North Ogden, we're going to see large amounts of traffic, larger amounts of traffic than we do currently. And so we opted and proposed to put in a traffic signal that that would function better than trying to purchase the corners of property, which would affect homeowners on that.
And a cemetery that's right there.
Correct, and there was a cemetery right there as well. And so you can make a signal function with less of an impact, and so, and we did that with the existing right-of-way, with a small portion that we actually had to purchase on the southwest corner, which was that field part of the ATC to make that signal work.
So I guess the question is, is the timing, your estimated timing on when a light would be appropriate to install, and whether, I guess, whether we really do need to have a plan update to make sure that a light can go in instead of a roundabout?
Yeah, so, and if we did follow the plan on 1100 North and Monroe, and we looked to put in a roundabout there, if the property owners that live there did not want to sell, it would require going through and doing a taking on that property. And we would follow the Uniform Relocation Act, and they would be provided fair market compensation for that, but it would also require an action of the city council to be able to do that. Nobody can unilaterally do that. It would be your body that would do that as well. So I don't believe the CIP is shown to actually do a round, we're proposing to do a roundabout, or excuse me,
No, that's why, that's why the planning commission liked it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not proposing to do that this year. However, our plan and Harrisville's plan actually show a light at 1100 North and Washington. So that's one thing we want to work with UDOT, because right now, I feel like our residents are avoiding any south turns onto Washington Boulevard just because they can't safely pass, or to go all the way a road, which is all the way across the road, which would be impossible. But Harrisville, in their plan, shows a connection with a light at Washington to 89 as well, so that would allow our residents to access 89. And so we're going to be working with them and proposing to do improvements on Washington there.
Okay, I just wanted to have that discussion with you. I'm sad to see that it's not in the CIP as it's listed.
We are working towards that in the future, though. That's what we're working towards.
Well, as part of that community plan, when it was done, and I believe, this is my belief, that it got in there as a roundabout because we felt like that was more likely than a signal. But a signal would certainly serve the intent that the citizens wanted anyway, so.
Okay.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Just bringing it up.
Good enough.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay, thank you. With that, this is a public hearing, so again, we'd like to invite, appreciate public comment on this item regarding the capital improvement plan, the five-year plan. So if you'd like to come and address the council, please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. If you're online, go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll bring you in. Okay, not seeing any movement.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Hare and a second by Councilmember Chuburka to close the public hearing on this item. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Oh, okay, that passes then. Okay, we have a motion on the ordinance.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2024-17.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Chuburka and a second by Councilmember Blair to adopt proposed ordinance 2024-17. This is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Chuburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hare?
Aye.
And Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye, and that passes. Okay, up next, this is the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, and in this item, we will be hearing a presentation on, let's see, the fee amendments and the tentative budget. So we'll hear the presentation on all these items and then take public input or the public hearing on this. So first up to present on the fire system inspection fees, Justin Sorensen, our comptroller, will address us on this one.
Thank you, Chair. So the fee amendment for you tonight, the adjustment is for our, so each year, the city requires permits and inspections for our private fire protection systems. This is performed by a third party, but under Ogden Municipal Code 9-2-8, it currently states that that fee for the third party may not exceed $12 per inspection. The proposal would be to amend that to be, to not exceed $15 per inspection. And then we would also propose to add some language related to, that we would, to amend, also to increase or add language to add a CPI-based increase to that as well. So each year, as we look at that CPI, that we can increase that based on that amount. So the proposal is to amend that fee. Any questions? And again, I apologize, this fee is not collected by the city, it's collected by a third party, but we set that fee, so.
Thank you. That's all I was going to say is, they set that fee, we're just, we
Pass it on to them.
Yes, yes, so we never actually collect it, but they, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we have Brandy Johnson, Deputy Director of Management Services, to talk about the water rate and discount fee amendments, or or Justin. Justin will be presenting on that item.
Yes, I will start this off, and this is a similar, same presentation as I went over last week, just wanting to make sure that anybody who did not hear this will be able to hear that. But this is really about history of how Ogden came to be and be able to be, to have their water system, and that had to do with this next picture, and that's because there was water at a certain place, and that was on the top of, end of, really where Pineview Reservoir sits today. There are great, great water. This is a picture of an, it was an Artesian well. The city obtained those rights basically almost at statehood, and that's where we received the majority of our water for our water system, is through this well field and our water treatment plant below Pineview Reservoir. Again, these are some great pictures that we received and worked with our recorder's office, that they had catalogued and going through, and they had a lot of documents concerning this water line. But it was constructed in 1935, and it was very significant. It also supplemented a water line that was constructed in 1915, which was a 24-inch water line. But these play critical roles in being able to meet our demand for the city. This picture was actually of the 24-inch water line when it was replaced in 2013. As you can see, that was an old line, still line, and it had lasted beyond its life. Again, that was just digging off the side of it and uncovering it, and it had failed, and probably the majority of the canyon had similar issues when we replaced that water line. We were losing significant amount of water, and so the existing 36-inch water line, and we call it 36-inch, but at the bottom end, it's actually a different material and a little bit bigger size, but again, it's aged, it's gone beyond its lifetime, it's, and we need to be able to replace this prior to ultimately failing, because if this line fails, one, between the well field and our treatment plant, we lose a significant amount of water. Basically, the most water we can produce out of our water treatment plant is 13 million gallons a day, and in our peak season right now, we are probably producing right around 28 million gallons a day down these two pipelines, and so we would lose that difference per This project is really split up into three phases. One phase is we call the Pineview Water Line, which is from our well field to just below the water treatment plant. The next phase is from below our water treatment plant all the way down to the bottom end of the canyon, and then we proceed to go up the hillside about 800 feet in elevation to where then we enter in, and we call it the 42-inch vault or overflow, which feeds into our 23rd Street Reservoir. So the next pictures are kind of geographically where these are. So we need to go from our well field underneath Pineview Reservoir, along SR 158, down the side of the dam. Then we need to go from our water treatment plant through the canyon. Again, this water line, though it crosses SR 39 multiple times, about three or four times, the line itself is not laid in the roadway. The 24-inch line that was replaced in 2013 traverses right down the roadway, so, but we do cross that line a couple times. And then, once we get all the way to the bottom and go up the hillside, we go from what we call the overflow vault to the 23rd Street reservoirs. Again, in closing, this line was put in, again, about 90 years ago. This is one of the reasons why it has become necessary for these rate adjustments, but more importantly, not fixing this now puts the city at risk, but it also, when we look at sustainability, there's two parts to this. There's one, the sustainability of the physical system, of the water system, but also the sustainability financially for the water system is what we're looking at here. And that, by taking care of those two items, it will ensure proper water management practices for now and a long time into the future. But with that, any questions?
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Do we have any other presentations on this? Lisa, up next, okay.
Good catch.
Might need a budget for a new charger.
This is the most exciting part of this presentation.
Unfortunately, Laura Lewis with LRB and Fred Philpott, we're both have previous engagements with other cities, so you get the third string today. I do have their permission to use their slide deck, and this is the same presentation that Fred provided last week, and we've also had in a work session. Justin presented the project that we're trying to fund. One of the requirements One of the requirements that we have in place before we can execute on, on loans is to demonstrate we have a fee structure in place where the debt can be repaid. So with the rate structure objectives back in 2007, when the council undertook the huge task of looking at the utility funds and trying to plan for improvement of, and replacement of very old, decaying pipes and, and infrastructure, they set some, some priorities. And one of them would be that they are revenue sufficient, that the, the utility funds can pay for themselves, that they have cash reserves of 360 days of cash on hand. And the purpose of the large amount of reserve is to reduce the rates when we go to market to bond. This is very attractive to people who buy our bonds. And so we're able to get lower interest rates with these kind of reserves. And then to use debt to strategically finance large projects with debt, to both promote inter, intergenerational equity, so that the life of the, the infrastructure is paid for over, over the bonds. And that not everyone today has to pay for the infrastructure that's gonna last 30 to 50 years. And, and also to reduce those interest costs as often as we can. So we monitor those debts and monitor the markets. So we can go out and refinance when it's financially beneficial. And then to have a goal of two times debt service coverage. Again, this is specifically for lower interest rates, to have that kind of debt coverage. So in looking at all of these things, and, and looking at a water model that can replace its own infrastructure, those were the goals that were set up and, and the reason the rates are set the way they are. The proposed increase includes a 4% rate increase over the next five years. In addition to that, there is already something in ordinance which allows for a CPI increase. We actually call it a blended inflation adjustment in our ordinance. It's, it's pretty much the same thing as a CPI. It's just using two CPIs and blending them together for a blended inflation adjustment. So that would still be included in the ordinance on top of the 4% rate increase. When LRB modeled this, this for us with projections on those kind of increases, we used a 3% for the BAI going forward after fiscal year 25, because we don't know what that will be. We don't get that information until January of every year, for the next June. But with that model and the rates at 4% rate increase, plus the BIA, we hover around the 360 days of cash on hand. With the state and WFI debt, the state debt comes, the payments start immediately. The WFI debt, we modeled that, starting to pay that back in 2028, around the time the project is completed. And then, just a reminder of how we calculate that blended inflation adjustment. We use the Western Region CPI. And we weigh it against our operating funds. So we, we've looked at, we've, we've looked at a point in time of what our operating was versus our capital, and it was 67 and 33 was what was being invested into each of those areas. So we, we've just used that same, same model. So it's 67% based on operating, 33% based on construction, to get a blended inflation adjustment of 3.18 for fiscal year 25. So the recommendations are to maintain the blended inflation adjustment, and then to propose a five-year rate increase of 4% each year for the next five years. And I, I, we've modeled what that looks like for the average rate payer. We, talking to our utility billing folks, the majority of people don't exceed that first tier, that first $6,000. So we've modeled a rate payer who will pay a base rate plus 6,000 gallons per month over the next five years to show that, that increase, what that increase is. 1578 a month from now to fiscal year 29, for just under 190,000 a year, $190 annually. And then we modeled some of the higher gallon users for both with secondary and without secondary water. There are different rates for, for those, because those with secondary water will pay for their, their water through their taxes, through their secondary provider. So, any questions?
I don't, don't see any. Thank you for that information with the breakdown based on average usage, so. All right, now, I had my list back upside down. So now we'll bring up Brandy to talk about the discount fee amendments.
You're fine. All right. Okay, so good evening. I am here to talk about the utility billing discounts and those amendment proposed. So just to give you a little background, so currently Weaver County administers a property tax relief program as prescribed by state law through the Weaver County Clerk Auditor's Office, who is Ricky Hatch. Relief programs are designed to help those who are experienced financial hardship, those who are blind, deployed members of the military, and disabled veterans. So currently, the county provides a list of approved applicants who are experiencing financial hardship to the city each year. This is the only tax relief program we currently administer through our ordinance. The monthly discount is applied to the customer's utility account that is comprised of 50% of the water base rate and a $2.50 discount on the garbage fees. The current monthly discount is $15.42. The current number of accounts is around 400 that qualify for this discount under the financial hardship program. And as some of you know, we did implement a new utility billing software program a, a couple of years ago. And with this, this is a labor, very labor-intensive process for our utility billing staff. We do have to manually touch every single account because we have a percentage and we also have a flat rate for the different utilities. The current fiscal impact of the discounts currently is $62,000 for the water utility fund and $12,000 for the refuse utility. So what we are proposing is that we would like to expand this program to include the blind, disabled veterans, and deployed military through the county's property tax relief program. Like I said, we're already currently doing the financial hardship. We are also proposing that the discount would be a monthly single discount applied to the account. So it would be a flat amount of $15.50 per month, adjusted annually using the BIA, instead of adjusting water and refuse. This will reduce the administrative burden on our staff, even with the expansion of this program. And the anticipated number of applicants who would qualify for all tax relief programs is 1,000 accounts that the county has provided. So as proposed, the estimated financial impact would be approximately $186,000 in discounts for the water utility and the refuse utility would be $0 with the new proposal. And that is it.
All right.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm sorry about my confusion. So right now, Weaver County has this property tax relief program.
Yes.
And we're wanting to expand it to water? And refuse? No?
No, we, we currently use the financial hardship tax relief program for our water utility and refuse.
Okay.
We want to expand our program to include all of their property tax relief programs.
And would we administer it, or will they?
They administer it, and then they provide us a list the first, it's usually January, February each year. They provide that list to us, and we go in and apply the discount for that following year.
Got it, okay, that makes sense. All right, thanks, sorry, I was trying to follow, but didn't do a good job.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, and our last presentation on the fiscal 2024-25 budget is the tentative budget proposed. Yeah. Glenn, welcome back.
Me again. So, wait for that to come up. So you've heard this presentation a few times now, and several people in the room have heard it a few times as well. So I'm gonna try to move through it a, a little bit more quickly than I have on the last couple of times I've given the presentation. So one of the places I wanted to start was with the resources themselves. So as we talked about with the CIP, a lot of the information is available online if people are interested in, in really diving into the details. What is available online is all of these materials. So the, the mayor's proposed budget book, that's the, all of the numbers from which you're working right now with the tentative budget, the mayor's presentation, the line item budgets that shows all the details for each of the accounts, agenda packet materials, department-specific budget information, staff presentations, and then of course, the recordings of the meetings. So these are the primary sources for those. So it's the city's budget page, just from the main Ogden City page, the agendas and minutes page under the council. And then the council's budget page also has some information as well. And the presentation I gave a couple of weeks ago goes into more details about where those materials are and what is available in each of those places. Just a quick reminder, you do have a couple of guiding documents that we use for going through the budget process, and that includes the financial principles document, and then the budget goals and guidelines. And so, when we get into the numbers a little bit, again, I won't go into as much detail as I've gone into in the past. So if folks are interested in, in getting the details, they can refer to those. They can refer to the work session materials that you all have reviewed over the last month and a half. But the summary is, as proposed for the FY 25 budget, there is a proposed 9.11% increase in general fund revenues. And that includes a couple of items that we want to focus on a little bit. So the first line and the last line there. That includes $183,000 that is proposed in the budget, so that does show in those budget line items. And that is the result of approximately a 1% increase to property tax. We do have the certified tax rate back, you all heard about that in the work session. So we say approximately a 1%. To make up that 183,000, the advertised increase would be 0.94%. And you all had some additional discussions on that in the work session as well, about what you want to do as you move forward with your truth and taxation noticing and process. But that hearing is scheduled for August 6th. The other thing that's included in that line item budget, the proposed budget that was given to you by the mayor is a $1.8 million transfer from BDO lease revenue to the general fund. That is a 12% increase from the $15 million, $15 million transfer from BDO. So this is meant to supplement the, the general fund wages and benefits. And then, as it was proposed to you, to have what we call above the line, or so, an authorized transfer that would happen every year would require an ordinance amendment. You, as a council, have yet to determine that ordinance. So you'll talk about that in the coming weeks. So right now, it is essentially proposed as a one-time transfer until you figure out how you want to handle that going forward. So the flip side of the revenues, of course, is the expenditures for the general fund. So that shows how that's distributed through each of those funds. The enterprise funds are anticipated to increase about 10% over the adopted budget from last year. And internal services funds goes up just a little bit, just 1.71%. And then you can see some of the other funds that are listed there. These fluctuate based on grants, projects, other things. So these tend to fluctuate more year to year. But you can see the overall Ogden City budget, not counting the RDA and the MBA budgets, is just under 5%. And so far, we only have two Schedule A changes. And one of those is a correction for a new position that's proposed. And then the other is a truing up of your CDVG and home grants that you deal with through your annual action plan. So when we get to the personnel changes that are proposed in the budget, there are 16 new positions that are proposed in the budget. Most of those in public services, but a few other places throughout the budget. And along with those 16 new positions, there are six positions that are, have changes attached to those. So three reclassifications and three title changes. And then with the 16 new, if you were to adopt all of those as proposed, the budget would authorize a total of 697 full-time employees in the city. So this obviously doesn't count all the temporary or part-time folks, but these would be all of the authorized full-time employees that the city would have. So the much anticipated compensation study is nearing completion. And over the next few weeks in July, you'll be hearing more details about that. So you'll hear the presentations, you'll hear from the consultants, then you'll have a chance to deliberate that. But for right now, the justice court judges, their salaries do need to be changed. That's a requirement of the state. So those are proposed to be changed with the tentative budget, so we can have those in place by July 1st. And then all of the other updated salary schedules are expected to be adopted with the final budget in August. And just to touch on the capital improvement projects, as I mentioned in my previous presentation, the first year of that five-year plan, that's, that's what we're looking at in the budget. There are a total of 42 projects that are proposed in the, in the FY 25 budget. Two of those are ramp projects, 12 are one-time projects. And that's the list of the projects here. And then the other 28 are the perpetual or the ongoing projects. And, and they would go for the things that one would imagine that would go for, street sidewalks, water sewer utilities, parks, city facilities, and other things like that. So as I mentioned, again, in my, in my other presentation, there's a total of $25 million proposed for CIP projects. However, that number is a combination of the 4.3 in the, in the CIP fund itself, and then just under $21 million that's other funds, and that does include the utility funds. But that $25 million does not include $390,000 that's proposed to be transferred from BDO lease revenue directly to the Gulf Enterprise Fund for some irrigation improvements, $100,000 to the airport. That is a match for FAA grants, and then $150,000 to critical project contingency. And then, as I mentioned, those two other projects, the 36-inch canyon water line and the TSA holding room are funded differently, so they don't show up in that $25 million number. So, just to quickly go over when you looked at all of these things, for folks, if they want to go back and, and get some additional information, throughout May, all the Tuesdays in May, you had presentations on the budget. So the, the May 7th was the mayor's presentation. The 14th and the 21st had presentations in the work sessions with those topics there. May 28th, you had another work session to receive information on the, on the accounts listed there. And then you had some opportunity for some general discussion through the month of June. So the 4th, the 11th, and then earlier tonight, you had some general discussion and some discussions about any other Schedule A changes that you wanted to make. And then moving forward, all of the Tuesdays in July, the 2nd, the 9th, and the 16th. Currently, there's no meeting scheduled for the 23rd or the 30th. So you'd have those three Tuesdays in July. Those will mostly focus on the compensation study and the Schedule A1 changes. As far as actions, so the first action you took was setting the public hearing on the tentative budget. That happened on May 21st. And then on June 4th, you opened the public hearing that is being continued tonight. And you set the public hearing on the enterprise fund, which you held earlier tonight, and then the public hearing for the fee amendments. And then, of course, you'll hold the public hearing, and you'll have an opportunity to vote on all of those items. And then, of course, you'll hold the public hearing, and you'll have an opportunity to vote on all of those items. Next Tuesday is the, is the primary election, so we typically don't hold meetings on those election days, so we're not scheduled to hold a meeting next week. But moving forward, August 6th, 6th, as I mentioned, is the Truth and Taxation Day. So that's the day that hearing will happen. You'll have the opportunity to adopt the final budget on that day, and that would include the Schedule A1 changes that you would have to the final budget, the staffing document, the certified tax rate, and updated salary schedules. And because we're going through the truth and taxation process, that does give us a little bit more time. We need a tentative budget in place by July 1st, and we need a final budget in place by September 1st. That's all I've got for you. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those if I can.
May I ask just a clarifying question, and I think you covered this in the work session, but just to clarify for everyone else. When we pass the tentative budget this evening, will that then start like the hiring process for all those new positions? Or would that wait until August when we do the final?
That should wait, because the staffing documents, the salary schedules, that won't be completed until, until August.
Just a clarifying. Thank you.
Okay, no other questions then? All right, so we've heard about the fire system inspection fees, the water rate and discount fee amendments, and the tentative budget. This is a public hearing on these items, and so, again, we welcome your feedback from the public. Please, if you would like to address the council, please step to the podium and state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. And if you're online, go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll recognize you there.
I have a couple of questions. On your BFI...
I'm sorry, just please state your name. That's okay. Thank you.
Pardon me, what'd you say?
Just state your name, sorry.
Oh, forgot. Laura Lewis.
Thank you, Laura.
On your BFI, why do you use that instead of the municipal cost index? Because that seems like that would be more applicable to what we would actually do, the things we would purchase and the costs of those items. And then, one other item came up was a capital improvement at the dinosaur park. Can you tell me what that capital improvement is? Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Bramwell. These questions are kind of specific, because I also own a home in Ogden Canyon. So, in 2013, when you put the 24-inch water line down Ogden Canyon, all of the homes in Ogden Canyon were part of Ogden City. They were residents of Ogden City. Then in 2017, all of the homes in Ogden Canyon were annexed into unincorporated Weaver County. So all of those homes are no longer part of Ogden City or Ogden City residents. However, all of those homes are being served by Ogden City's water and Ogden City's water line. So when that 24-inch line was put down the canyon, some of the homes in the canyon were either cut off from the line at the time of that line replacement, or like my home that was supposed to receive a line, did not receive a line at that time. The others are the original old lines, which are probably 100 years old. Because they, the, the lines between the 24-inch line and the meter were not replaced as part of that project on all of the homes in the canyon, as far as I understand. However, these homes are now no longer part of Ogden City. We're unincorporated Weaver County. So I'm assuming we won't be protected by Ogden City anymore. My question, I have a couple of questions about the 36-inch line, which is, at least in my part of the canyon, on the other side of the river, from where the 24-inch line is. And my question is, would it be possible for the homes in the canyon to come, to draw service lines off of the 36-inch line? These would be people that already have an Ogden City meter, that are already resident, or have been promised an Ogden City meter, such as myself. So I guess I want to know if that's an option, since the 24-inch line was already done, and none of these things were addressed when the 24-inch line went in. My other question about that line is, in regards to the trail that's been proposed up Ogden Canyon, I'm just curious if the trail's going to be on top of this water line. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Chair, signal movement. Our hands online. I make a motion that we close the public hearing on this item.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Hire and a second by Councilmember Graff to close the public hearing on the 2024-2025 budget. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That passes then. In terms of some questions raised, the, using the BIA index instead of a municipal cost index, I don't know if I have any of the information on what, why, why we would pick one versus the other, but maybe Lisa could share some information on that? The blended index uses two separate indexes instead of just one, but, yeah.
The construction index that we're using is the American County, American County inflation. And then, we do use the Western states. We could look at changing it, but that, that was the index we chose to use at the time.
Okay. All right, and then, capital improvement idea, or what is being proposed at the dinosaur park with the capital improvement is a question. And I don't, Justin, yeah?
Yeah, so in the CIP for the dinosaur park, I believe it's $50,000 for just some facility upgrades of the existing facilities.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Justin.
He might be.
And then, and then also, yeah, addressing the, as far as the annexed homes in the canyon and services coming off the 24-inch line, and now potentially, would there be options off the 36-inch line?
Yeah, so, as I talked about in the presentation in 2013, the 24-inch line was replaced down Ogden Canyon. And that is actually the line that services anybody in the canyon. The 36-inch line does not provide any service to anybody in the canyon, just how the line was set up, hydraulically, how it works. And the, because we can't get pressure on the top end of that 36-inch line enough to meet what needs to be required by the division of drinking water. The homes in the canyon never were in Ogden City. That's always been. The, the boundary of Ogden City is actually down on the, as you, as you go into the canyon, it is, a good marker is actually probably, as you all have heard, the hot pots. Those hot pots are outside of Ogden City by a few hundred feet. So, anything further up the canyon is, is not in Ogden City. And Ogden City actually did not replace any of the existing hookups in the canyon, meaning the, the laterals in the canyon were, were not actually done by Ogden City. Those are all considered private, because they are, they are outside of our service district. And so, only people, Ogden residents, we, if they're in our service district, we will cover from the, the main all the way to the, just behind the curb and gutter. And those don't have that, so we don't actually provide any, any connection for the, the, to, to those homes. Those are all, those laterals that serve those homes are, from the main are all owned by the property. And, and we have started discontinuing, actually providing will-serv letters in the canyon. So if there, if it's a home that actually had a will-serv letter, we will still honor that, but they have to pay for those hookups to that line.
Okay.
So.
And then, as far as the, the location of the, I'm assuming 36-inch line potentially would go under portions of the, the proposed trail, trail route that's, that's, yeah, being proposed?
So, the, it depends on, or the exact location. So, farther down, meaning on the western edge, there, there probably, there's been proposed in coordination with the county and UDOT, to put a trail over top of our, our pipeline at that location. However, farther up in the canyon, there, there is no, there's nothing that's been done. On the south side of SR 39, there was a study done, I believe, by UDOT, that Horex did that, and they gave some proposed locations, and that was done, I want to say, back in 2014-ish. So that would be the, what I would refer them to.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other questions or discussion there? We have three separate items. We'll probably address them each one at a time.
Chair, I'll propose, I'll make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2024-15, amending Ogden Municipal Code section for the fire protection system regulations.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Chaburka, and a second by Councilmember Graff to adopt proposed ordinance 2024-15, and this is a roll call vote.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye. And that one passes. Okay.
Moving on, I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt proposed ordinance 2024-16.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Blair to adopt proposed ordinance 2024-16, and a second by Councilmember Graff, and this is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye. And that passes. And then, the tentative budget proposed ordinance 2024-14.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-14, adopting the proposed tentative budget for Ogden City for fiscal year 2024-25.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Myers, a second by Councilmember Blair to adopt the proposed ordinance 2024-14. And this is also a roll call vote.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hire?
Aye.
Vice Chair White?
Aye.
Chair Ritchie?
Aye. And that passes. Okay. Thank you. All right, we are now at public comments, so this is a, a time and an opportunity to address the council on any topic related to anything, I guess. So, again, we invite you to the pulpit to address the council. Let me hear your comments to three minutes.
To the pulpit?
To the pulpit, to the podium, to whatever this thing is.
Bully bully?
Yeah, the bully pulpit. He's back. Thank you.
You're all primed, so, here we go. Again, my name is Blaine Ritchie. I live on the corner of Country Hills and Taylor. And I've got a petition with 61 signatures, and I'm going to read what the petition says, and I've got some history to follow up. "We, the undersigned residents, living along Tay, living along Taylor Avenue from Country Hills Drive to Village Drive, and directly affected by traffic, request that the road should be closed via gate, as, as has been done for Birch Avenue on the north side of Weaver State's campus. It seems that if Birch can be closed, the same should be able to be done for Taylor. It is understanding that the gate that was added on Birch will remain closed except for emergencies. We think that a gate at Village Drive could be opened on football game days and the annual fireworks show, but mostly it should be closed on a day-to-day basis. The safety of children on the street and the negative quality of life are issues for the current situation. The amount of traffic the residents have to bear brings with it speeding and noisy, illegal exhaust that is a penchant for college-age students. We believe that Taylor should not be the only residential street with access to the university campus, but that traffic should utilize arteries to enter campus roadways." I have a letter that I sent to the mayor's office a year ago, and I'd like to read some of this. Some background, several years ago, there was a Weaver State Campus Planning Meeting for the residents in the Weaver State immediate area. Someone there asked Mark Halverson, who's the Weaver State Facilities Management VP, when they were planning to close Birch Avenue at Edweson. His response was that it had been discussed, but there were no plans to have that happen. After the meeting, I talked to Mark and mentioned that this would create concerns for the residents on Taylor Avenue south of the campus if that were to come to fruition. He reiterated that nothing was in the planning stage. Fast forward to January of this year, which is last year now, where there were barricades and detour signs put up at Birch and 36th Street. I called Ogden City Engineering and talked to Jeff, who stated that the road was temporarily closed to allow Weaver State to remove some houses. At that time, there was also a no outlet sign placed on top of the street identification signs. Jeff stated that he didn't know why it was placed there, and that there would still be access to the campus once the work was completed. It wasn't until July of last year that I noticed that a gate had been placed on the Birch Street right away, effectively closing the road through traffic. After discussing the issue of closing Taylor to tra, to traffic with Barton Briarly, it was revealed that I could submit an encroachment sidewalk permit in it, for consideration, to perform the same function to close Taylor at Village Drive. This proposal was rejected due to there not, there being no picture of the proposed gate and no insurance information. As a resident, it would seem that this would be beyond the scope of what would be accomplished, but make more sense for the city to have that responsibility. At this point, I don't think that Taylor Avenue should be the only residential street with access to the campus. That, in my view, will increase traffic load that we already have to bear. And as I mentioned to Barton, what is good for the goose is good for the gander. As all traffic to the campus should be routed through Harrison and the Skyline Roundabout, and use Weaver State's internal roadway and not residential streets. It would seem that having through traffic eliminate on Birch is a big deal. As I understand, the residents there are thrilled at this change. I don't see why the same should, why the same should be any different for the residents on Taylor.
Thank you.
Would that go over?
Just barely. Right, very closely. Just before we proceed with any other public comment, I know Mayor Dadoski, he's got a family situation, just wanted to turn, just...
Thanks. I didn't want to walk out without an explanation. My daughter is stranded and needs a ride, and my wife can't get there, and we can't find an alternative, and I, I gotta jump out. So, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
I've just got to be a dad, so.
Yep. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
I'll go ahead and promise the residents up there on Taylor, on your behalf. I'll go ahead and take care of that. We'll get it resolved tonight.
Yeah. If we do that, he might send the chief, chief of police up to pick his daughter up next time, yeah. Any other public comment?
Teresa Bramwell. I'm going to make this quick. You know what I would love? If you guys have any power, that you can help me and the people in my neighborhood around 25th and Monroe, I'm going to tell you what I want. I want to make some money. I have lost so much money owning this property. It has been like a black money pit of death. And I would love to make some money. So whatever you guys can do, whatever you can come up with, whatever the plan is, I want it to be me making money. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. That was to the point.
Yep, it was.
Teresa, all right. Okay, not seeing any other public comments. Mayor, I don't know if you want to talk about the Taylor Avenue. I know this was brought to our attention a year ago, and there has been some discussion as well as traffic studies. So I don't know if you want to address that and any course of action, or, yeah. And, and commissioner, or commissioner?
Yeah.
Councilmember Blair has some vested interest there.
Yeah, just a couple of things I can comment on is, one, I think we are evaluating the process for Birch Creek, so that, that may come back here, or if it doesn't come back here, I think the administration is, is just evaluating that process and may look to, just if we need to do something more formal, we'll be taking a look at that for Birch Creek. And on the Taylor side, we did do a traffic study, and I think we owe Mr. Ritchie a, a follow-up on that to, to kind of take a look at the results with him and let him know. But that, it, it doesn't appear that, I think with some of the changes with the OGX and public transportation, that the traffic volume there is not, not as high as maybe, maybe the residents are, have observed, or it's gone down. But we'll, we'll take a look at that again. But we'll, we'll take a look at that again and then follow up with Mr. Ritchie directly on what we've found there.
All right. Anybody have any ideas for Teresa? Oh, she's gone. Making money for Teresa. Okay. Comments from council, any, anybody?
Chair, I do have a, as we had citizens come today and talk about their, the budget concerns that they had, I was very impressed that they read the documents, tried to understand them as best they could, and were very eloquent and respectful in their input. It is amazing that we can go through this with such little input when so many other things draw so much, when this is really the basis of what makes living in Ogden what it is. You know, the, the level of service that we provide and, and those kind of things. So I just wanted to thank those people that came and, and gave their input. I think that was absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. I just wanted to comment about, at the gathering we had at the library about Lester Park, there was quite a variety of different residents around the park that attended. And one couple that I know of that has bought a home, and it's been renovated, and they've been working on the yard, that is actually just across the street from where Teresa's always talking about her challenges with her property. And they were saying how much they really loved living there and that they've built some really wonderful relationships with people that live in the apartments right next door to them. And that those people are always commenting on how great, you know, they really like their yard and how they see them doing all this great work on it, and that they won't even let their dogs go to the bathroom on their yard anymore because they see how much care and love that couple has put into the home. So I just, sometimes I feel like the neighborhood that I live in has gave a little bit of a bad rap in some of the comments. And I know that there's certainly challenges in our neighborhood. But I just wanted to reiterate that there are people that are very happy and healthy living in my neighborhood. And for example, this one couple that's lived there just, probably just a little bit over a year, that really loves the neighborhood and has enjoyed, you know, making relationships with people in those apartments that sometimes get a negative rap.
Thank you.
You know, I'd like to acknowledge Blaine Ritchie. This is the public process live and in person. You know, we've had conversations since I knocked on his door, actually was fixing his sprinkler system during my campaign last summer. And this was the, the topic of conversation was noise, not just volume, Mara, but also noise and speed are a problem in that neighborhood. And it's continued to be, and we've remained in conversation about this. We've talked to Public Works about it. And when Mr. Ritchie felt like he had no other avenue, he knocked on his neighbor's doors. And all but about a half a dozen houses on that street have signed his petition for various reasons and understandable reasons. And I just want to encourage that sort of action on the part of citizens in the community. This is how you're heard, when you feel you're unheard. And I want to encourage the city to embrace the concerns of Taylor Avenue and work with the neighborhood to find a solution to the erosion of their quality of life in the neighborhood.
Chair, it took everything I had not to, as the kids say now, jump up and yell "preach" when Mr. Ritchie spoke today. We, as, as a resident of that area, it feels like everything that we have tried to come together and, and ask for and agree upon has only happened and benefited those around us. We asked for, at first, we were promised, and again, these are from years past, promised, that they would put, they would spray paint in both directions, speed limit 25 along both ways. That never happened. When we followed, when I followed up on that, they promised us a flashing, this is your speed, this is the speed limit, this is your speed sign. You can imagine our dismay when we found out that Forest Green was able to get two of those, and we didn't get any. We wanted to, we asked Weber State, and we talked to President Morton about getting a gate closed right there, right, I think it's called Village Road, right there, which would have just eliminated that through traffic, which we feel like that, right, that in and of itself would eliminate the, the main thoroughfare of college students going through, zipping through the, zipping through that neighborhood. Again, we were shocked when we found out it went on the north side of the campus, not on our side, which we had asked for. So I can understand his, his, his being upset. I can understand his feeling slighted and ignored because we have tried, and I'll include myself in that because I do live just around the corner, I live in that area. We have tried to go through the proper process and ask for things politely and kindly and work together with the city, with Weber State. And yet, we don't have one, one thing that says the speed limit, the speed limit on that sign. We don't have anybody there patrolling it, which we've asked for. Please, I mean, August, when school is back in session, I would dare say is, none of you would want to walk on that street because college kids are all late, and they all shoot down that street, and every one of them thinks that those gutters are speed bumps. So instead of going through the gutters, they try to go around them, which puts them up closer to somebody's lawn, which puts them closer to somebody's kids. There are major, major flaws on that street. And yet, nothing, and I've been on the council. And if, if I, if I had any power, I would have got this street taken care of. So sorry, Teresa, there's no way I can get her any money. I can't even get a speed limit sign on that street. But I agree, I, something has to be done. I don't know what the traffic study says. I don't know when the traffic study was done. I've talked to Justin Anderson, and I have full confidence in his ability to, to monitor that. I would assume those traffic studies are done in the summer, which school is out and it doesn't help anybody. Justin has promised me that he'll look into it in August to get a better version of those numbers. But something has to be done. Otherwise, you can close it on Taylor and just shove everybody through Ed Hill. And then you'll have those people come down here and do it. It's, it's a problem because Taylor was the number one access point to Weber State, and you closed the other one. And it, all it did was just funnel more traffic down a road that already has significant problems. I, I don't know what the solution is, but, but I believe, I was going to say, Mr. Ritchie is a good source and a good neighbor to work with. I think he has a great pulse on what, what is needed there, and he'd be great to partner with. But, but something has to be done. I, again, we all bleed purple, we all love Weber State, but yet, and I've said this before, but none of you have to deal with the other aspects of Weber State, like, like those people on Taylor do. And, and we all try to take care of, we talked earlier today about our cross, our crossing guards and the danger that they're in. And like I said, that area is getting more and more populated with young families. That means young kids, and you've got college kids in a hurry with literally, literally no enforcement. And, and it would be tragic to have something horrible happen there when it's been well documented that there are problems on that road and nothing's been, and literally, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just stating fact, nothing has been done. So I appreciate Mr. Ritchie. I appreciate the effort that he and the neighborhood have done. And I would just implore the administration as a team to, to seriously look at it, to move it up on the priority list, and to work with those residents, work with Weber State, and do whatever they can to come up with a compromise that, that works for everyone. I, I understand where we live, and I understand the, the, that we chose to live next to a university. But, but I didn't choose to live next to a 45 mile an hour, 50 mile an hour freeway zone to the university. And neither did these residents. So I, there's my two cents.
Thanks. Thanks, I think somebody might have said, there's your nickel.
Yeah.
So, but I appreciate that. I almost, I almost called you Commissioner Blair, so I don't know if I'm foreshadowing anything there, but anyway.
Nope.
Thank you, nope. All right. Thank you for those comments. I don't know what else I could add to that other than I think as a, as a council leadership, we'll, we'll work hard to work with administration on workable solutions there because I think that is, is necessary. So any other comments? Vice Chair White, didn't, oh, I don't know if you had any other, yeah.
Would I always make a comment there?
Well, no, no.
You're just making sure?
Yeah, just making sure.
You have 15 minutes.
You have two cents as well, yeah.
18 minutes.
Okay. We had, we had on our agenda a consideration to move into a closed session. I don't think we'll be doing that tonight. And so I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Myers, second by Councilmember Chaburka. It's a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.